All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are live. We're broadcasting. It's a Monday.
It is a Monday.
Raining outside. Is it raining for you?
Oh, it's pouring.
Okay, all right. I thought it was me.
There will be snow. Then we'll get in snow, so it's gonna be It's gonna be about three to four inches of snow tonight, which I'm not looking forward to.
Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, we have a special for you. Rudy Giuliani and Jenna Ellis are in Arizona. We're getting ready to go there in just a few seconds, but we have to take a few seconds to tell you about our wonderful sponsor.
MyPillow. The show is brought to you now by MyPillow, and we appreciate it so much. In fact, today, I don't know if you guys realize, it's actually Cyber Monday, so today you're gonna get buy one, get one free. It's a Christmas special with MyPillow. Just go to mypillow.com and you're gonna click on the radio listeners promotion Christmas special. See it where it says radio listener special. You're gonna see that on the left-hand side. Just use the promo code Wayne. You can get a buy one, get one free pillow, buy one, get one free mattress topper, which is absolutely amazing that they're doing that. Also on the six-piece towel set and the Giza sheets. So all you have to do is go to mypillow.com, type in the promo code Wayne, and you're going to get buy one, get one free. It's great for gifts this Christmas. Or if you want to, you can call the 800 number 800-889-0532. Tell them Wayne to present you. You have to say that to get your free pillow, mattress topper, six-piece towel set, or the Giza sheets, which are amazing. So do it today if you can later on after the show.
That's right. Promo code Wayne.
Wayne.
Gotta make sure that you have that in there. Okay, so again, we are going live to Arizona. We will be putting some of your comments up on the screen, so.
Please share because I'm not sure if mainstream media is showing it, but Jenna Ellis, you know, she's really killing it today. So make sure you're sharing the show so everybody can see this, because some people think that they can't see it, and it'll be great for them to be able to watch with us.
Yeah, so.
Tells operators to connect the Ethernet cords to the router, and it is, the systems are connected to the internet.
And then what evidence do you have that there actually was connection to the internet?
Our teams looked at spider graphs of the Dominion network on Election Day and showed the increased web traffic, internet traffic on Election Day for Dominion servers.
So on Election Day Dominion was communicating by internet?
Correct.
Contrary to what Mr. Krebs said or thought?
That is correct.
And tell us now, what, how do they, take us through how the vote can be modified, and then take us through what you saw in the machine in Michigan where they did actually modify the vote?
So my background in the military started off my career as an air cavalry officer, flying helicopters, counter reconnaissance, reconnaissance. Moved later into information warfare as an information operations officer, running psychological operations, computer network operations, deception, operation security, and electronic warfare, special electronic warfare. And our team has been researching this specific issue since August of this year. We are working with another team that's been intently working on this voting machine manipulation for about two years, when it became apparent in the Ted Cruz and Beto race in 2018, as well as the Kentucky governor's race with Matt Beavens. We saw significant anomalies in those races, and that's kind of the experience or our background working with this system. And I would tell you as a, as an unconventional warfare, information operations, information warfare specialist, the American populace is facing an unconventional warfare scenario. This is, this is information warfare. The voting systems in the US and Arizona Dominion and several other machines were built to be manipulated, and as the mayor said, they've been used in elections around the world with questionable results. And we believe that these same questionable results are present in this election. Again, my background as an information warfare officer is how to get in and corrupt these machines to conduct strategic influence operations. How do I, how do I get the enemy or target population in a foreign country to think and act a certain way? These machines have multiple points of injection that are vulnerable everywhere from the server level where passwords, accesses are posted for the dark web for any hacker to get in and access them. And what they can do at the far, far right limit is download CSV files or like an Excel spreadsheet, change the columns and re-upload them. And that can be done at the server level. At the operator level, if there's software, it can be corrupted. It can be manipulated with a device that's as small and as simple as a USB device, which these machines are booted up and run off of. So a little bit of history, and I can show you some, some charts on, on the DNA of these machines, but the common, the common software goes back to SGO. SGO is Smartmatic. As Mayor mentioned, they sold Sequoia voting systems to Dominion in 2010, and then Debold spun off Premier Election System to Dominion as a result of the antitrust concerns. I believe that was also in 2010. The bottom line is that these systems all have similar code and similar functions, and it's displayed in their operator manual. So, you know, I know it's kind of been, you know, and the press has kind of been poo-pooed that, yeah, this doesn't go back to Hugo Chavez. But I personally debriefed the son of a Cuban intelligence officer who had firsthand knowledge, speaking with two of Hugo Chavez's family members, that in the Maduro election, when the populist uprising threatened Venezuela's totalitarian leadership, that Hugo Chavez's family member said that, don't worry, that it's guaranteed that their father invested the money to build the SGO voting machine system. So in a nutshell, these systems are not what you've been told, if you've been told anything. They are connected to the internet. There is no transparency of how the voter information is processed, moved, and stored. And as a matter of fact, these companies have refused to allow any type of inspection into their code, and they always decry, you know, it's our IP, it's IP protection. But with the declaration, I believe with Jay Johnson was our Secretary of Homeland Security, he declared that the national election system was national critical infrastructure. So there is, you know, I think, reason to, for, you know, for us to understand the code and how these machines function and how they use our, our votes and process votes. The, the voting record is able to be modified, deleted, adjusted by administrators or outside threats, and those are also explained in the user's manual. Operators can assign votes for write-in votes, blank or error ballots in large numbers. So all these votes that could get put into a batch file, and then the administrator of that voting or tabulation system can say, okay, there's, there's 8,000 votes in this batch file, or there's 5,000 votes in this batch file, and they can say, well, I think, you know, this batch will just make this go to this candidate. And then they have that, and they have that authority in the user's manual to do that. Our team is not the only team that's working on this. There are literally hundreds of other small cyber teams that weighed in on this. There are tons of statisticians. Some of, you'll hear from your, some of your, your Arizona citizens today. But we've been working in several states looking at these anomalies. But it's, it's not a secret. I mean, DEFCON last year, I think the hacking teams broke in and manipulated these machines in under two minutes. So it can be done. It's easy, and, and there are very little security. So they can be hacked and manipulate votes. One of our white hat hackers discovered a malware on the server. It's called the Qsnatch. It basically records login credentials and passwords. So if someone in Pennsylvania or someone in Maricopa County or someone in Antrim, Michigan logged in, that malware will grab their username and password. And so you can log in, if you got access to the backside of that malware, you can log in wherever you are in the world to Maricopa County to manipulate. So there's multiple ways.
Interrupt your second. So we get the point of this clear. You actually examined one of the machines, and you were actually able to see very, very clear changes in vote in the machine, correct?
Correct, in Michigan.
It was down ballot changes. How many?
Correct. So the, the down ballot looks, it was for, there were, there were changes in the Election Day vote on 11/3 to the recount vote on 11/6. Say, for example, the school board, one lady on the Election Day received 519 votes, and this was a very small precinct. And the post-recount, they went from 592 to 852. The total votes went from 1068 to 1810, and the write-in vote jumped from 24 to 112. There was another proposition, a state proposal, that jumped significantly from, from 700 votes on Election Day up to 1083 on, on the recount. So there, there are a lot of variabilities, and what we believe this is due to is the, the USB drive that was used in the Election Day versus the post, post-election recount.
Well, this, this proposition, when I see, I think we should give them a copy of this. Make this available to them because it shows on the day of the election, this, this is a proposition about the use of future revenues generated from oil and gas bonuses. And I take it it was fairly controversial. So the first vote was 774, 4, 508 against. The second vote was 1083, 4, and 206 against. Quite a difference. Now, how did that difference come about? How do you accomplish that difference? How does the machine change after the votes are cast? What does the machine remember other votes?
So there's a, there's a card that stores the votes, and it's run against the algorithm that's put on the USB card into the actual machine and the, and the tabulator. And that difference was, was basically the tabulation algorithm.
Why, excuse me for my ignorance, but why would you put an algorithm in if you have a vote that's 774 to 508?
That's a.
Why wouldn't you just look and see, was that the correct vote? Why do you put an algorithm in, which is introducing an outside force to what should be an internal process?
To shift things how you'd like them. When you, when you look at moving these algorithms around through the different precincts, you can, you can achieve quite a number of aggregate ballot shifts. So this is, this was one instance and one recount and one small.
So when they looked, when they looked at the machine on Election Day, it was 774 to 508. When they looked at it again on the recount three days later, it was 1,083 to 206. Is that right?
Correct.
And that happens because of an algorithm, not because anybody changed their vote?
The, the elections clerk did write an affidavit, and they basically said that we followed all the procedures on Election Day, as well as the recount. And these were the results that the election clerk.
We're also going to submit this study. It's quite complicated. I fell asleep last night reading it and had dreams about internet surveillance and all kinds of things. I propose getting an expert to look it over, but it shows what exactly what the Colonel is saying, that these machines should not be voting machines, because anybody can communicate. It's like having an open computer. Anybody can communicate with them and do whatever they want with it. So we'll submit this and this to you that shows you that that they can be changed, that they were changed, and then exactly how you can do it. Now, we know, we're not saying it about any of the machines in Maricopa County, but we haven't seen the machines in Maricopa County, nor have you. This evidence is being submitted to dispute the lies that Dominion and Smartmatic are putting out, which is their machines are perfect, their machines can't be tampered with, their machines are tamper-proof. The reality is their machines are just the opposite. They're completely vulnerable. Is that right?
And if you look up on the screen, that's exactly what, let me see if I can, do I need to put this at full screen or is it a better?
I think you need to explain it.
So this, this is a Spiderfoot reconnaissance tool that looked at dominionvoting.com network that was analyzed on November 3rd. And basically this shows vulnerabilities. It shows volume, volumetric internet traffic, the raw data. It shows all of the web servers, physical coordinates, all the vulnerabilities that, that are associated with the server. Basically, it does show that this was, this was connected to the internet on, on Voting Day, and the, the volume of traffic was significant. And the vulnerabilities that were, there are plenty of vulnerabilities that, that hackers could penetrate the system.
Can you tell if some of those communications went outside the United States?
We did observe packet traffic that were going from the US. We don't know if it was specifically Dominion traffic going, but to a, to a server in Frankfurt.
In Frankfurt, Germany.
Excuse me, Mr.
And who has it?
Colonel Waldron, could you just take a moment and explain packet traffic? Because probably a lot of folks who are not sure what that is.
So it's, it's bits of information that are sent over the internet from, in internet protocols from one point to another.
Thank you.
What's in, what's in Frankfurt, Germany that would be of interest?
Well, we, we looked pre, prior to the election, one of, one of our white hat hackers and found that there was traffic in a Sidle server. Sidle is one of the companies, and I can show you the, we mentioned before the interconnectedness. The interconnectedness of these, these companies. So this is sort of a historical link to, to all the voting companies, and we got Smartmatic in the, in the middle. It's a licenser to Dominion voting systems. Sidle runs election night reporting through SOE software and Clarity Elections over here. And Clarity Elections is, if you, if you click up on a lot of the county and Secretary of State voting systems, it'll pop up as property of Clarity Elections. So it doesn't really belong to the counties. It doesn't really belong to you. It really belongs to Clarity Elections.
Just to make it simple. A Dominion machine that I go in and vote, it is susceptible to easily having that vote changed from the outside or by them in particular?
By an authorized user or an unauthorized user?
By an authorized or unauthorized user?
Correct.
As a hacker?
A hacker.
Oh, a hacker. So my vote is only as good as the integrity of Dominion and all the hackers that exist that can get into the Dominion machine?
Your vote is not as secure as your Venmo account.
Pardon me, say that one more time.
Your vote is not as secure as your Venmo account.
And you think of any reason why any, anyone would hire them to count votes in the United States?
I could postulate a lot of.
Of any of them good reasons?
They have a strong lobby. They work with the government. They work with state government agencies, and they've got the infrastructure to sell their services.
Can you now look at, in reference to Arizona, the analysis you did of the vote in Maricopa and Pima Counties that was reported? It's the Arizona fixing the vote chart.
So we, we noticed a difference in Arizona versus the other states. Our team mostly focused on what we call spike analysis, which were a, an inject, an electronic inject of a lot of votes, and where the number of votes that were injected in a specific time period exceeded the ability of the, the scanners to process ballots and upload. So basically, it's, it's a signal of a potential anomaly where we would want to go in and do forensic analysis on the ballots that were processed in those batches to analyze. The way that these systems work is that you can run votes in, run votes in, run votes in, and if you get write-in ballots or error ballots, it just accumulates them into a batch file. And there may be, you know, 2,000, 3,000, 4,000, 5,000 votes in this batch file. And then the administrator or the tabulator can just go, okay, I'm ready to process batch file. And they, they send it, and then it records those votes. In, in the user's manual, there's, you know, ways that it, it shows that the administrator can vote that batch, you know, in a 80%, 20%, 100% however the, the administrator chooses. And that basically is a tool to, to allow them to move votes through the system faster. So Arizona was, was a little bit different. It had a, a pretty strong rise up, right up at the front, the first part of Voting Day, whereas the other states, and I can show you those, have a gradual increase in votes. And this may have been due to the fact that Arizona allowed early counting and tabulation, so those batch files could have been dropped in right away. With this injection spike at 8:06:40 PM, and this is adjusted from Zulu time. So this is 143,100 votes that were injected. That was in excess of what the, the machines could have processed. The real reason that we believe that this spike was a little bit of an anomaly and should I show the email that was sent to the Arizona legislature?
Yep, of course, sir.
Say again?
Yes.
So this was an anonymous email that was sent to all members of the Arizona Legislature. And it was also sent to DOJ. This individual sent the email, wanted to remain anonymous, but had enough concern that he sent this to the Criminal Division of the US Department of Justice. He did not want to be included in the investigation, but the information that they recorded was what we would like the opportunity to investigate on your behalf or a forensic team of your choosing. That doesn't matter to us. Says that please be advised that Pima County Recorder located at 240 North Stone Avenue, Tucson, Arizona, in Pima County, Arizona, and the Democratic Party added fraud votes in the initial count to the vote by mail totals released at 8:00 PM on November 3rd, 2020. So this coincides with what we observed in the data analytics at that eight, that spike. We weren't aware of this until, this email, until after the fact. So there were approximately 35,000 fraud votes added to each Democratic candidate's vote totals. Candidates impacted include county, state, and federal election candidates through the utilization of the automated ballot count machines in Pima County elections, which were not Dominion, but they have the same pretty much functionality. My understanding is that 35,000 was embedded into each Democrat vote totals. Below are the meeting notes. Meeting I was invited to by the Democratic Party in Pima County, Arizona on September 10th, 2020. No phones or recording devices were allowed. A presentation was given, including detailed plans to embed 35,000 in a spread configured distribution to each Democrat candidate's vote totals. When I asked how in the world that will 35,000 votes be kept hidden from being discovered? It was stated that spread distribution will be embedded across the total registered voter range and will not exceed the registered vote count. And the 35,000 was determined allowable for Pima County based on our county registered vote count. It was also stated that total voter turnout versus total registered voters determine how many votes we can embed. This embedding will auto-adjust based on voter turnout, because the embed votes are distributed sporadically. All embedded votes will not be found. If audited, because the embeds are in groups of approximately 1,000. This is so county recorder can declare an oversight issue or error as groups of 1,000 is a normal and acceptable error. So if you believe that your one vote counts for one vote, this is Maricopa County's embedded totals will be substantially higher than Pima due to embeds being calculated based on the total number of registered voters. When I asked, has this ever been tested and how do we know it works? The response was yes. This has been tested and has shown significant success in Arizona judicial retention elections since 2014. Even undetectable and post-audits, because no candidate will spend the kind of funds needed to audit and contact voters to verify votes in the full potential of total registered voters, which is more than 500,000 registered voters. This year, our Secretary of State has removed precinct level detail for election night releases, so candidates can't see precinct overvotes. This is what I have from the meeting. Just thought I'd report this. Not sure if you can do anything since I was unable to have a recording device in the meeting. Again, we hope this individual would, would come forward and issue this as an affidavit. But this is significant, and we also noted that the reporting numbers from Pima and Maricopa County merged Election Day votes with write-in votes with absentee ballots. So there's no way to, in the publicly available data, to parse those votes into, into the segments. And I believe we noted in, in the piece of information that was provided to you that Maricopa County had 1.9 million mail-in ballot requests. So, and those, there was a Maricopa County official on videotape that did say that they did not validate the signatures on the write-in ballots this year. So that's a 1.9 million vote fraud potential. Even if it's 0.1% of the vote. There's a lot of room for error.
Can we just review that quickly for one second till we get it right?
Ladies and gentlemen, please. I, I know that you're passionate about this, but there are a lot of people in this world that want to hear this. And if we can't hear the witnesses over remarks, that deprives people of hearing the truth.
So what I take from your testimony, Colonel, is that 35,000 votes were embedded to each Democratic candidate in Pima County?
Correct. That is, that is the allegation of this email.
The allegation by the gentleman who hasn't given us an affidavit.
Correct.
That they were distributed based on the voter turnout carefully so they wouldn't look suspicious.
That's correct.
And that's essentially what the Dominion, Smartmatic, that's, that's essentially their modus operandi, right?
That, that's their.
They don't just put in 10,000 votes. They put it in carefully, so it's hard to detect.
They move the algorithms around to different precincts until they get the the aggregate number that they want and need, and then they shift the algorithms to, to other precincts.
Did, did the Democratic candidates who got the benefit of those 35,000 false votes include Biden and Harris?
According to this email, it was all local and federal races.
So if that were true, then the result of the election is totally opposite the one that they're so anxious to certify. Correct?
Yes, sir. And again, this, this email went into every Arizona legislature that.
Now, we don't know if the gentleman is telling the truth or not.
Correct.
But as, would it be possible if you had the machines in Pima County to be able to see if there's evidence of this?
In order to do that, there would have to be a full forensic audit from the, the USB that drives the voting to the PCM CIA cards, to the tabulators, to the routers.
I'm just asking, could it be done if you, if you had the will to do it?
Yes.
If you wanted to find out if the vote in Pima County were honest or not, would you do it?
Yes, sir.
And without doing it, you really have no idea.
That's correct.
And the machines here. And the machines used, used in, in Pima County are different. Are they that much more secure?
These systems, these, they all have similar vulnerabilities. Our team focused on Dominion. The, our, our partner team focused on ESNS. And they're, they're very similar as far as vulnerabilities.
Did he say anything that suggests the same thing happened in Maricopa County?
This gentleman appeared to be a, an IT specialist in Pima County. So he only wrote allegedly to what he observed.
Do we have any knowledge that anyone from the state of Arizona attempted to look for him?
I believe the, the legislators, some of the legislators did try to, to locate this gentleman.
Anybody from law enforcement?
Not that I'm aware of. But I, again, I'm, I'm not law enforcement, so I'm not sure.
But even if you can't find him, you could determine the validity of this or maybe determine the validity of this by doing a forensic audit.
Correct.
There's a, there's an available scientific tool that would tell you, I mean, did Biden get 35,000 phony votes?
That's correct.
And it's not being utilized as far as you know by the state of Arizona.
Pima County, I, I believe that total vote total was less than, less than a million in, in Pima County. So it, it would be possible and feasible to do a, a full audit, a ballot audit. And I, I also was informed that your state, through the, the Counterterrorism Information Center and the DPS here in Arizona, do have a capability to analyze and validate ballots for ink consistency. So if there were mass-produced ballots in Maricopa County that were stuffed, your DPS, I've been informed, has the capability to analyze those ballots for paper consistency and ink consistency. So if there were mass-produced ballots, you could determine that on your own.
Excuse me, Colonel Alder. So I think what you're saying, and I'm going to repeat this back to you. These might be pre-printed ballots to simply move through the system. Is that what you're suggesting?
There are indications, we have affidavits from Pennsylvania that there were ballots that were pre-positioned in a bobtail trailer, a tractor trailer truck. And that these ballots were, the, the, the thought was that this was a cachet that they could go and grab the amount of ballots they needed and take them to the specific tabulation centers. And that, that's an affidavit that's from, from our Pennsylvania work.
Colonel, so repeat one more time the piece of information that I think people were shocked about because it is hard to believe. Did you say that a Pima County official said that they didn't validate any of the mail-in votes?
That was Maricopa.
Maricopa.
They didn't validate the signature. They didn't validate the signatures on the mail-in ballots.
And, and that's 1.9 million?
Correct.
And do we know who that is?
I, I would have to get the video.
Well, could you get it for us?
Oh, yes, sir.
You have to do it right now before the end of the hearing? That would render every one of the 1.9 million votes absolutely never checked for fraud, deceit, mistake. And if they're mail-in votes, that can't be done now. They've been separated from the envelope.
Correct.
Would indicate. So those are basically 1.9 million votes that are illegal votes.
Or that had the potential to be illegal votes that weren't validated. The signatures weren't validated.
But can we, can we determine now if any of them are legal or illegal?
If the envelopes were separated from the ballots, there would be no way to tell a ballot for candidate, you could still go back and look at the envelopes to validate the signatures, but you wouldn't know what the ballot
And isn't that the reason you're supposed to have an observer when you do that?
That is, that is part of the chain of custody procedures, I believe, in Arizona.
And when they talk about chain of custody, that's what they're talking about, right?
Correct.
A lot of witnesses are going to talk about that. So let's just sum up a few of the things that you also found. Tell us about the green button in Maricopa County on the machine. And there is one witness that's going to testify that all day she saw election officials constantly pressing the green button when somebody was voting.
So what, what that was when a, when a voter wasn't sure, and I, I believe this was also linked to another witness that's going to talk about with the, the differences in the pens and the Sharpies, that the Maricopa Elections Division, in early voting, they specified that only use ballpoint pens for voting. And then on election day, they specified only use Sharpies. And the, the idea is that is the bleed-through on the ballot as the scanners would cause an error in an error ballot. By creating an error ballot, the election officials basically would slide those votes into a batch file that could be adjudicated by the election administrator or the operator. And the, the green button was to say, okay, there's an error, but go ahead and push cast ballot and it punches that into, into an error file. It can be adjudicated by the election administrator.
Now, you examined the voter database and your team did, right?
Say again, sir.
You examined the voter database, you and your team?
Those were actually some local Arizona folks that examined that.
So you took that from
I, I spoke directly
State data? Oh, I see, okay. You spoke directly to
To, to local investigators here.
And you have here voter database discrepancies. 6,000 voters at least entered into database, no sex, and default date of birth. And they're non-existent in Alexis Nexus.
Correct. And I believe there'll be a, a witness to, to discuss that later this morning.
So unless those can be, unless those can be discovered, those votes would have to be, would have to be eliminated.
Correct. And it was explained to me that the way that happens is that they, you can register online for a driver's license at the same time you can register for voter registration. But the driver's license doesn't require the same information as the voter rolls. And so those kind of go into a queue that the Secretary of State would approve for the voter rolls over time. But there appear to be 6,000 voters that were on the voter rolls in the voter database with no sex and a default date of birth. So if they entered 0101, you know, 1900 or whatever that date was.
They also discovered over 2,000 votes that used a false address, an address of a vacant lot.
Correct.
You already told us about the 1,915, 487 mail-in votes that were not verified with regard to signature in Pima County and Maricopa County.
Correct.
Also, in Pima and Maricopa County, Republican poll watchers were very often forced to stay on inside, outside, and unable to view the vote process.
Correct.
And is there an estimate of the number of illegal immigrants that voted in the, in the election? Has anyone done an estimate of that?
The American Immigration Council suggests that there are about 300,000 ineligible voters. And then the, one of the local newspaper reported that there were another 312,000, I believe, non-incarcerated felons and other illegal, other ineligible voters.
Has any attempt been made to investigate that to determine if they can locate a sufficient number of illegal immigrants voting illegally that would have a bearing on the outcome of the election?
That would really be done by the, you know, the county election fisher.
But it hasn't been done.
Not, not
And they're going to certify the vote apparently without doing it.
I, I'm not, I'm not aware if they
It would be, it, it'd have to be an idiot not to think that illegal aliens, immigrants voted, right?
It, it's very possible.
How many are there in, in, in Arizona? Approximately? Anybody's guess, but what's the lowest number?
That, that
Can anybody help me with that?
Question for the, the, the local legislature.
5 million, 4 million?
I wish we knew, sir.
Pardon me?
I wish we knew.
What's the lowest number we could use? 4 million?
Representative Cook?
Mr. Chairman, my colleague, Representative Townsend and I have had several discussions over the past few weeks about that number and she could provide that to Mr. Giuliani.
Mr. Chair.
Please, Ms. Townsend.
Mr. Chair, is this on? Thank you, and Mr. Giuliani, Mayor Giuliani, I, I can't tell you how many people are in this state that are potentially can vote illegally as an illegal alien, but I can tell you that there is a way for them to vote under the federal only voter program. Meaning that someone here illegally or a fake name, anybody that can put together a voter registration card with a fake name or if they're not eligible to vote and they're not in the MVD system here in Arizona, when they register to vote, if they're not found in the MVD system, the DMV system, they're not there, then they're contacted to see, do you have a birth certificate? Do you have anything to prove your citizenship? When they don't answer, then their name is relegated to the federal only voter list, which there's 36,000 in the state of Arizona of people who can't prove their citizenship, can't prove they exist, other than when they show up to election day, all they have to do is show their bank statement, their title to their car, anything you can reproduce on your own computer with your fake name on there or whatever and onto a bank statement and you get a ballot. And you can vote for president and your congressperson and senator. So up to 36,000 plus people in Arizona could potentially vote. And I do have the numbers of who has voted in Maricopa County is 4,100 of the true federal only and another 4,000 that are out of, supposedly out of state. So those alone haven't been researched deeply enough to know, does that name even exist as a person? And are they here, is that someone here who's here illegally or not? So we don't know upwards of 8,000 people in Maricopa County alone who have cast a ballot who weren't able to.
Well, that's pretty astonishing. So I will say, and I may be wrong, but let's say there were 5 million illegal aliens in Arizona. It is, it's beyond credulity that a few hundred thousand didn't vote, particularly given Representative Townsend's explanation that there's an encouragement that goes on to have them vote. Now, every one of those votes would be an illegal vote. Every one of those votes denies a lawful voter of their franchise, just wipes it out. Has there been any attempt to try and investigate that after the election, even on a sample basis? Like going to a, a district where there are a large number of possible illegal aliens and go back, check the names and see whether 5,000, whether 10,000, whether 20,000? Has there been even an attempt to do that?
None that I'm aware of.
Well, I mean, that's totally
Can I, can I speak to that, Mayor?
Yes, please, please.
So we put in, two years ago, we put in an elections integrity unit in the Attorney General's office. And I've been on the phone with them, asking them, what are they going to be doing? How can they look into this? And they told us that they don't have the authority to go out and look for crime. They have to have it presented to them. So they can't go out and do an audit. They can't go out and, and actively research this. I also was told the same thing by the Board of Supervisors that they cannot perform an audit above and beyond what's already been done that's in statute. So all we're really left with that I'm aware of is having, and as much as I appreciate this forum today, and I'm very grateful for you, we need an actual committee hearing. Like I'm the chair of the Elections Committee. If we were to hold an actual committee hearing, we would have subpoena power to go and look at the machines. So look at these things, you know, and inspect them and, and get down to it. So we can do an audit, we just need to conduct a committee hearing to give us that subpoena power to be able to do so.
Mr. Giuliani? So when, when this vote is certified, if that's not done, there is no question in any reasonable person's mind that the vote totals contain large numbers of illegal votes from people who are not citizens of the United States. The question is, how many? And the officials certifying have made no effort to find out the truth. Which seems to me gives the state legislature a perfect reason to take over the conduct of this election because it's being conducted irresponsibly and unfairly. Why, and why, and why doesn't your state legislature exercise its responsibility under the Constitution? But what's wrong with that?
Mr. Giuliani? That, that is the essential question that we are here to ask.
So now, any, anything else? Colonel, you did a great job. He's available for any more questions?
If you're done
Available all day.
If you're done, Mr. Giuliani, we, we do have a number of questions from the panel members for you, sir.
Good, yes, sir.
The first thing I'd like to ask is, you spoke on system capability. And I know that much has been made of the excoriation of the state of Texas on the Dominion equipment, software and all that. Can you provide just a very short comment on what, why they said, not only are we not recommending this, we're prohibiting the use of this equipment in the interstate?
In a nutshell, vulnerabilities that were issued, not addressed and not fixed. There, there were too many system vulnerabilities.
Okay. And you also referenced a comment about DHS. And I'm starting, why did DHS say security for this election was the best it'd ever been? Do you have any insight into that?
In my experience in life, there, there's, there's generally two factors for individuals. I mean, it's either competence or commitment. So they were either incompetent or not committed to learning the truth at, at the senior leader level, not at the operator level.
And does DHS know about the information that you've shared with us or that you're sharing with us in, in the process of this? Have you shared that with them specifically?
And much more.
So beyond what you're saying here, you've gone into much greater depth.
Yeah, our, we have relationships with our local we have relationship with our local DHS personnel in Texas and both the, the Intelligence Divisions and CISA. When I started working on this project in August, I called them up and said, you guys have, you guys have got to come out and look at it. They did. They spent an initial three hours going through this data. At the end of that, one of them said, I think I need to go outside and throw up.
Okay, besides that, did they do anything about it?
They had multiple follow-ups. They drove up to our Dallas counterpart team, received over 600 gigabytes of data that had been accumulated over, over time. Our team provided them over 200 gigabytes of confirmatory data and they analyzed that. After they, after they analyzed, there was a, a scan, a passive scan done. They conducted a limited scan and determined that there were vulnerabilities. They held numerous meetings with their folks, the cyber, the CISA cyber side and the INA, which is the Intelligence Assessment Division.
And I'm sorry, CISA, could you let the folks who are watching know what CISA is?
CISA is the, the agency in DHS that's responsible for cyber and infrastructure.
Okay. Members, any other questions? Representative Beasucci?
One, one note that might be important. Members of the Elections Division of CISA, I was told would never attend the meetings or the briefings that were conducted internal to DHS on the, the material that we had presented.
I'm sorry, who is that that did not participate?
The Election Security Division within, inside of DHS.
Okay, thank you. Representative Beasucci?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Colonel. I just wanted to make sure I have this correct. So what we're talking about, it was Mr. Krev, Krevs? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. He stated the most secure election in history. He stated, we're not connected to the internet. He stated, no votes leave this country. This is all things he's stated, he's stated publicly.
So on the CISA website, correct?
Right. So are you willing to say under oath that you have seen the connection to the internet? You have seen it go offshore to Germany, Frankfurt? Are these things that you have personally seen and can say, that is not true?
Our, our white hat hackers, yes, they have that traffic in the packets.
So, why would he, why would he make that kind of comment, do you think?
Either not knowing, believing the myth, or not wanting the truth to be known.
Senator Burley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Colonel. I've got a couple of questions on the Board of Supervisors. During one of their hearings, it said that the techs for this equipment, that's, by the way, the county doesn't own this equipment, it's leased by Dominion and Smartmatic, but would you, is it irregular, is it SOP for the tech reps to be there during the election process?
Yeah, that's been something we observed in Michigan, Pennsylvania, whether they're full-time Dominion employees or contractors, there are Dominion employees that are there to run the equipment.
As in the Board of Supervisors hearing they had, they'd actually made comments that they actually provided them an office space with, in the county, for them to handle this stuff. My question is, a couple of weeks ago, they did a test to show that, how the system was secure, so they did it before, and then after tests, so everybody could see that they, Board of Supervisors and county elections, that, see, this is, this cannot, what you're hearing is false. Obviously, or is it, during that test, is, can they find the anomalies in there during that, that basically, what I always call a dog and pony show? Would that show up in one of these tests?
In a forensics examination?
No, just, see, come here and look at, this is how we certify the machines, calculate the machines, whatever, zero it out, this and that. Obviously, these anomalies would not be showing up during that moment, correct?
Correct, and it's our understanding that Dominion had a software update at least in a couple of states, I'm not sure about Maricopa County, but like, the day before the election.
Representative Bartow, any questions?
I did have one question, thank you, Colonel. Excellent information. You described web traffic increased during the election, as opposed to, how do you measure the increase?
Are you talking just in, in, on the Dominion server network?
Yes.
They just look at volume, volume of data that's moving through the pipes. And I'm not a, our hacker team is, that's, they're the experts, I just kind of, the big picture, know how to dance it, but they do, they do measure volume traffic. Matter of fact, on the Frankfurt server on Election Day, there was a German cybersecurity professor that was noting that the increase in traffic was, you know, and he related it back to COVID and said, you know, we haven't even hit our indoors winter season yet, and we've hit the highest traffic, and he specifically noted that one of the reasons was the American elections.
Was it an exponential increase?
I don't think it's an exponential, but I think it went from seven, seven point something terabytes a second to 10 terabytes, so it went to a lot of, you know, a pretty big increase, not an exponential, though.
Okay, to my unqualified mind, I don't know exactly what that means, but it sounds big.
The volume jumped up pretty significantly on November 3rd and 4th to that particular server in the pipes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, Colonel Waldron, so essentially about 33, 34, 35% increase?
I would have to go back and look at the numbers, but...
I mean, from seven to 10?
Ballpark.
Yeah, that's big.
I can't remember the exact numbers.
All right, very good. Senator Gowen, do you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Colonel, you're talking about the SGO system, and that was, you said Hugo Chavez, he was a partial owner in that. Now, that's, that's the beginning of Dominion?
SGO was a, was a separate company, but Dominion acquired Sequoia Systems that was spun off of SGO, and they also acquired Premier, which was spun off of D-Bold, but they all have a common, the common core, the common code really goes back to SGO, and that one org chart that I put up there kind of showed the licensing agreements that go back and forth between SGO and Dominion. So, it's the licensing for the, for the software and the code.
So, it still stems from the SGO system?
That's correct.
So, and then you're stating Dominion owns the data. So, does that mean, when they see the vote count, that they own that, not the county's estate?
They process it, they retain it, it's in their backup servers?
So, they have, they have the votes themselves as well, and that's supposed to be property of the state?
They've got, they've got the data, they've got the voter, voter data, voter registrations.
And then, you said Dominion sits on the board of Mr. Kravts, is that right?
That was on the CISA website, their...
When you say the board, what is the board?
It was their Elections Security Advisory Council.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Representative Roberts, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colonel Walton, earlier you were talking about the methods via internet and internal methods, as far as, I think you used the term, I forgot exactly how you said it, there was basically methods from the internet and then also internally, that there could be manipulation of votes. So, my question is, is there, do you have any knowledge of where the machines in Arizona connected to the internet at any point in time? And if not, or if so, are there logs internally in these machines that if we were to be able to subpoena these machines and demand them so they could be examined, could we see all of those changes that were made?
So, when you watch CBS, CNN, any of the mainstream media where they've got the live vote updates, that data is passed live. I mean, it's, it's as the votes are updated. So, it's, you know, nobody's getting in a plane and flying the hard drive to New York. I mean, it's uploaded, it's connected. So, it's, it is connected to, to the internet, and whether it's locally, I mean, they can move votes with the cards, the voter cards, those can be preloaded in laptops with the software that could be interdicted and upload fake votes, is in the allegation from Pima County, you know, in batches of 1,000. They can scan blank ballots, and then the administrator can allocate that batch of blank ballots to one candidate or another, either in 100% or any percentages that they allocate in the, you know, according to the user's manual.
So, to that point, just indulge me just a moment. Would you say that that is what we saw in the 2018 election with Governor Bevin, where we actually saw on television, real time, the movement of some 500 votes from one candidate to, I mean, it was so stark, you saw them go down on one and up on the other, and the exact number? Would that be a manifestation of what you're talking about?
So, the working hypothesis from our counterparts on that, because they've worked that and watched it, and they actually went to Kentucky to assist the team there, was that that was a server-level interdiction, so they went up to the server, downloaded a CSV file, changed the votes, and re-uploaded it.
Thank you, Representative Roberts. So, just to kind of tack on to what we were just discussing, it's my understanding, because there was an article here in Arizona, from the Arizona Daily Independent, there was a quote-unquote whistleblower that was talking about issues that they had observed. And so, one of the things they were talking about was that the data from the machines was being moved via the hard drive. So, what you just described as far as the real-time data being uploaded and all that stuff, just for the layman, that same type of manipulation, whether you plug in an ethernet cable or what have you, or you're doing it on a user interface, that same type of malfeasance could, could be accomplished in that method as well?
And I think in looking at these systems, we identified, you know, almost a dozen ways that you could inject or interdict to manipulate votes.
On that note, you said earlier that pretty much all of these machines have vulnerabilities. So, is there any system out there that you're aware of that is worth exploring, or do we just need to go back to the paper ballot?
There is, MIT developed a system with some capital infusion, it's a system called Votes VOATZ, and it's a blockchain-type system. Again, it's, when I first became aware of this, I went and talked to some friends of mine who were bank presidents, and I said, okay, why can't we apply banking principles? Because if you want anything done right, you go talk to the money people. That's, that's, that's who protects their stuff. And he said, oh, yeah, this is, and it's an app, you can do it as an app with, tie it in with Real ID and a blockchain-type solution, or, you know, the next-generation solution. But there are systems, and I believe the Votes system is deployed right now. I believe there, and I know West Virginia is one that I remember reading on their website.
Thank you. Senator Allen, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate it. Thank you, Colonel, so much for being here
today. I'd like to go back to the Board of Supervisors' letter where they talk about certifying the Maricopa County election, and they have five points that they make for the reason why they call this a reliable election. And my concern is, of course, over the Dominion tabulation equipment, they said it was vetted by bipartisan Equipment Certification Advisory Committee before the contract was finalized, and as required by law, the committee tested the functionality and accuracy of tabulation equipment before it was used in any Arizona election. Well, after listening to your testimony, that does not give me any confidence, because machines, of course, can perform very accurately, it is after, it's after the fact, after the election starts, after the ballot is, is starting to be put into the machine, that, that these problems start arising. So, is that accurate to say that, that this does not, should not give us confidence about this being a reliable election?
Ma'am, anything that is software-based can be manipulated and changed with a click of a button, or, you know, you got two USB drives, plug one in, and you get one algorithm, you pull it out, you plug another one in, you get a different algorithm. And we also believe on the connectedness, these can be pushed down from the top and shifted down. So, think of it like a casino or a state lotto. Your, whoever owns the eye in the sky, you can control the margins, and that's really, I think, what we're looking at.
Well, certainly from your testimony, I can see that. And I have one more question, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
I believe Senator Burley has it to that point.
All right, go ahead.
All right, please proceed.
Well, I was going to switch down to the 1% early ballots that they did, and I had a question about that. So, Sunny, if you have something to what I said before, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Colonel, so basically what you're saying, for example, since the techs are already there on site during the process, so if a machine jams up, and naturally they call the tech over there to go fix the unjam, they could literally, without anybody noticing, because they're the techie people, they could stick a thumb drive in there and upload, change the numbers, manipulate, whatever.
We, there was an affidavit in Pennsylvania, from, I think it was last week, a gentleman supervisor had a Ziploc bags full of USB drives, and they noted that he was inserting the USB drives into the machines at a much higher rate than would be necessary or that they had seen in the past. So, yes, you, you know, it's...
Very, very. So, now I have it to that point. Forgive me, but it, what I think you're saying is that they have just created an electronic footprint, either in the data download that you're seeing real time, that you'd be seeing some kind of a spike, or is there something that's captured on the machine that itself, like a memory card that is resident on the machine, not, that is actually talking to the hard drive?
The, the machines, for the most part, the voting machines are just run by, you know, removable software and data cards, the cards that actually hold the votes. The backup servers is really where the true story would reside, as far as the uploads, downloads, the change, the error warnings for the mismatch errors.
So, would you be able to show with specificity, a machine in Maricopa County going all the way across the pond, inserting data into a server? Or would it be an aggregate of all the machines that were in Maricopa County, for example? Is it by individual tabulator, or is it by the server here that collects? Can you help me understand that piece?
Let me, I'll...
That probably goes back to your headache graph, I'm thinking.
Yeah, a schematic that, that sort of shows that.
The reason I ask the question is, we're still looking for evidence, and if that is in the evidence package, that's certainly something that we would want to know about. If we don't have it today, something that could be forwarded to the body would be great.
Let me see if I can make this bigger. So, this is Dominion Voting, the high level, it's a block diagram of how everything's connected, and I can print this off and provide it to you, or whoever would do your audits. But it's kind of hard to, kind of hard to see when it's blown up, but you've got ballot boxes, ballots taken out, this track all the way through the image cast central to ballot images, and this is really what's voted. The ballots are scanned into these image casters, and there's an electronic image created, it goes into results files, and then it goes into validation, adjudication, auditing, reporting, and publishing, and then to Democracy Suite EMS, the Democracy Suite servers, the database servers, the document management servers, and it kind of shows you how this all goes out to, to the world from, from this whole system. Election data, you know, this is kind of the top feed to all these servers, but this is really, it's, it's a network, I mean, it's a computer company, it's all, it's all networked, it has to be.
So, let me reframe the question. We probably would not be able to identify any specific tabulation machine showing up on the server, because it's all aggregated?
Yeah, it's, it's, these tabulation machines go through this process, but the results files, so if you work it backwards from the server, you would be able to go back to a ballot image, an electronic ballot image.
All right, thank you. Senator Allen, you have another question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The other thing in this letter by the Board of Supervisors was, they commented, again, of what made this a reliable election, that the Election Day ballots from 2% of vote centers and 1% of early ballots is required by Arizona law, and it yielded 100% match to the results produced by the tabulation equipment. So, that should give us, you know, and all the counties do this, they do this hand count, this little audit of small percent of the votes, to see how it matches up to the machine. So, could you explain how we shouldn't have confidence in that particular, how can they, how can they make that match up to the machine then, when they just arbitrarily pick out 1%? If there, if there's vote dumps that are happening and things that are happening throughout the process?
I would just say it's, it's something we learned a long time ago, garbage in, garbage out. If you've got 1.9 million votes that aren't, the signatures aren't verified, and they're just reading bubbled-in, you know, ballot cards, then yes, the ballot cards, when they run 1,000 ballot cards through, are going to come out with 1,000. So, that, you know, that small batch would represent what those particular ballots say, but there's, again, there's, that's why there's chain of custody requirements... But there's, again, there's, that's why there's chain of custody requirements, that's why there's verification requirements at each step along the way. So if each one of those, if one of those steps is broken, then the validity of the whole process is, is in question. You know, it's, you just don't know.
Right, thank you. I think we're, we're definitely, sir, in a, a new day when it comes to what is taking place across this country with voting, and we're going to have to probably really look at that. Thank you.
Representative Townsend, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Colonel, I just have a quick follow-up to some of the stuff we've been talking about as far as the security of the machines themselves. And as we know, like, whether or not something happened or didn't happen, I'm most concerned with voter confidence. And if there's all these holes, then we're, we're going to really deflate or collapse voter confidence. So I would like you to reassure me on one particular item. In the tabulation room at the MCTech here in Phoenix, in years past was, you had to have a special badge, and only people that were certified to be in that room with the machines and the tabulation and all that were allowed in there. This year. It would have been possible for someone to ask them to wander over to the machines and conversation with this, that we're talking about, or, or is it deeper than that, or something that's happened? How secure are these machines with this? We know that there's a chain of custody on the hard drive. You know, the machines we saw, many of them, let alone, almost to be in one of the voting centers, intended as secure. Well, how could somebody, the regular person with various intentions, walk up and change the solo, or should I put in the number of changing numbers? That's something that would have to be a.
Either an individual that has this system, or has to, you know, operate in this system to have an impact in front of a server. If they, they'd be sitting in Nigeria, in a, you know, as long as they got an internet connection that can get to that particular server. If they were, had access to, you know, the data from malware that's on the server, they could get the login password from, you know, a given county operator or, you know, American county operator. So there are just so many places that they could be interjected or penetrated. There's just, there's, there's just, there's just too many to, you know, to describe. But there's a lot of, a lot of ways it could be interdicted.
Mr. Chair and Colonel, so what I'm hearing you say is, I can't be confident that a volunteer of a political party that, you know, that the entire recorder's office and then elections director, everyone could have been on the F and up, and this is the most secure election ever, but if one random volunteer with the right information were to be in the tabulation room, could have been breached the security of the, of the machine.
Correct.
And therefore, we cannot stand here and say we are confident with that kind of access to these machines, machines left in buildings for a week. We cannot say with certainty that this is a secure election, and we have 100% confidence that nothing went wrong.
And, and you just brought up that, the chain of custody issue, and that that's, that's a critical vulnerability path. So if the chain of custody was broken, then you really, you really don't know. You can't, you can't say with confidence that it was a fair.
And Mr. Chair and Colonel, last point. If you were in charge, would you want a recount? Would you want an audit? Would you want a do-over? What would you do?
A forensic audit will tell you what was processed, but to the mayor's point earlier, as soon as those mail-in ballots, which were 1.9 million requested, and I think a good, a good percentage returned. If those signatures weren't verified, then, you know, you can count the same things over and over again, but, you know, it's, you're starting with flawed results already. An audit, a full audit, would be able to tell you if those were, you know, bad, bad ballots or pre-printed ballots. You know, you, you could do a full forensic audit on the actual ballots, but once the envelopes are separated from the ballots on that many mail-in ballots, it's, it's almost, it's almost impossible to, to go back without doing a forensic analysis of each ballot in the paper.
Okay, and Mr. Chair and Colonel, do you have any information about potential shipments of ballots to Arizona and other places from North Korea or something like? Do you have any information like that?
There, there were several affidavits that were provided to the, the legal teams. I don't have those affidavits with me now, but there were affidavits and, and suggestions, and I think more of those are in, in process to, to obtain more affidavits on those processes.
Mr. Mayor, can you tell us whether or not you have got, I don't know if you heard the question, or do you have affidavits that counterfeit ballots were somehow shipped into Arizona?
I'd have to look.
All right, thank you. Representative Cook, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and I'll, I'll make it brief. But I do have some stuff that I'd like to say, is that, Colonel, when I ran for office in 2016, I got a phone call one day that one of our county recorder's office information had been breached, and all of the voter information was for sale on the dark web. That was my first instance of being as, of becoming representative about this hacking and computer stuff and what's out there. I just went through my third election as a top vote getter, and I would like to say that I continuously have been tried to be hacked on my personal or ledge account, or, or whatever is out there on the internet. I later learned from people, Colonel, that the reason why this is done out of the country, and according to your graph, is that it is harder for us to track these people down and prosecute them when these computer anomalies and things happen from outside the country, inside our country and state. Would that be true?
We would not have the legal jurisdiction to go seize or search a server outside of the US.
Thank you, Colonel. And would this make sense that if you had a simple phone number, and then you went on the internet and then researched that phone number of where you received a text message that was from Ukraine, would that not be a red flag that your phone or information was trying to be attacked or infiltrated?
Correct, it would be.
Okay, so moving on to that, Colonel, what I've noticed is that about these voting machines and these plugged-in USB drives, when in fact, when we watch across this great country of ours, in many states, we have very few mountain counties compared to other states in here, you got to target two counties. If you notice that rural Arizona and rural Arizona legislators are up here, we're ready to go to work today. Our constituents demand it, and we demand it as their representatives, to work for them to solve these problems. But, but what happens, Colonel, is that the same thing when we look at this country on a map, and counties that vote for the President Trump versus counties that don't, it's the population and the masses. So I'm going to get to my point about Maricopa and Pima County. Okay, we all, in rural Arizona, we call it the great state of Maricopa, because Maricopa County has more legislators at the legislature than rural Arizona does. If we add all of ours up, we still don't have the numbers to be an equal voice at the legislature, but we have to work harder, which we can't. So if we look at Maricopa and Pima County, if I was going to, now we're going to get down to vote centers, okay? Targeted vote centers, Colonel. I wouldn't have to have a USB drive or to infiltrate every voting machine in every vote center in Maricopa and Pima County, would I? Or would I just need to target those individual voting centers in those two massive counties in the state to do what you are saying, to take votes and shift them over in those numbers? What, do you understand what I'm asking?
I, I've seen analyses that boil down national elections to zip codes, to just zip codes.
Mr. Chairman, I get fired up when I get into this stuff, because I read and hear everything that, that these people have said. It has happened to me. And I just thank you again for your information, confirmation, but when I go back to the 2016 hacking, what I see is a pattern, Colonel, is that there's a plan. There's a larger plan, and it's not a conspiracy theory, and I'm not nuts. But if I wanted to engage in a plan in 2016, Colonel, would I not start hacking and getting devoted databases and information, projecting of, why do we have, what is the number, 2,000 or 1,200 voters, I believe, in Maricopa County, registered that I believe have voted at a vacant lot? I mean, if I really wanted to go down the road, isn't that the way you would target it?
Yeah, there, and again, it's, it's, you can interdict this in multiple levels and multiple methods, and I think that's what's happened. It's a, there, there's so much out there, and it's, it's, to, to your point, you know, you're not a conspiracy theorist, but it's really hard. They've made it so hard for the public to understand it. And we call that in deception operations, ambiguity increasing.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Colonel, I have the last question, and what concerns me over what I've read and seen, is that could the data that you say could be traced back only to the scanned ballot at this point, so it can't go back to the individual voting machines, could that be bleach-bits or whatever that stuff is? Could that be, could, could the tracks, as long, the longer we take to actually hit the machines and check these things out, could there be time to erase that information and cover up if there was a crime or misdeeds?
There could, but now the batch files will go back to the precinct and the machines on the tapes. So there, you, you can track it all the way back to the machines and the precincts by the, the tapes, and it's what we showed in the Antrim County, those, those printouts on the, on the, on the precinct level. So that, you, you can go back. But really, all that's necessary to do, you know, there's not really a, a bleach bit, it's just pulling the USB drive out of the, out of the voter machine and the tabulators. So the, the machines themselves, other than the servers, really don't have a lot of resident information, the, the tabulation machines, you know, they can have some stored images, but the, the, you know, where they, you retain these, you know, the federal election requirements require, I can't remember the US Code Title 46 rings a bell, but the 22-month retention of federal elections records, it would be done in those, the, the ballot images and, you know, electronic backups. So the data is retained, and there, you know, you can do forensics on it, as long as it's the actual, the actual servers and the actual machines.
Colonel, thank you for your time, your patriotism, and, Mr. Chairman, I yield any remaining time I may have.
Thank you. I believe Senator Gawain has one more question, and I just need to remind the panel, time grows short. I think Mayor Giuliani has significant more witnesses and evidence that he'd like to have for.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colonel, I just want to get on, come back to the Dominion situation here. Where are the, where are the backup servers?
I'm sorry?
Where are the backup servers?
I am not exactly sure. I can try to get that information provided to you.
And this company, I think the mayor said they were a foreigner company, Canadian, is that what it is?
So we know, we know there are sites in Toronto, their, their offices are in Canada, so we know that, we know that there were data there. They also have servers in Serbia and other, other countries. But as far as knowing for sure where the data from Maricopa County went and resides, we don't know that, but they've got backup servers.
So an audit, because we talked about that a little earlier, first off, would that find where the, the server is and, or the information would be?
Tracing the flow of the information, yes, sir.
The audit would.
Correct.
And, but it tells whether or not it's true or not, that the 1.9 million signatures were or were not verified, right? So we would have an absolute.
So that would be a.
Colonel, could you get a little bit closer to the microphone? I'm getting, a lot of people are saying, I can't hear the guy talk.
Okay. So the, the adjudication of the signatures on the ballots, that would be totally separate, wouldn't be necessarily a digital forensic process, but that audit would be, you know, have to be conducted at the county level on all those, on all the envelopes.
So if we did an audit, if we were able to do that, tell me the things that could come out of that.
Well, if the signatures on the envelopes were invalid, you could necessarily get a percentage of the votes that would be disqualified. But again, when, when the ballots are separated from the envelopes, you know, you can't tell which ballot came from which envelope. So really, all that would tell you is a percentage of that, the percentage of those mail-in or absentee ballots that were not legitimate.
So what would the, what could the server tell us?
The server would basically tell you all of the electronics. So once the ballots are processed, the batches and the, the images, that'll, that'll tell you where those goes, and, and it'll also tell you any changes to the software, any updates, algorithms that were in place, and that's all present at the, at the code level. And that's really what these companies have balked at, providing access to the code, because they say that that's their intellectual property, and it's, they've been successful at preventing folks from analyzing the code.
So they're, they're utilizing their, their system for our elections, but it's their property.
And, and counties and states have signed up for that.
Thank you.
Senator Burley, final question.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and Colonel, just for clarity, not only can these machines then be manipulated with a thumb drive and everything else, it can be changed remotely outside the voting center.
That's, that's correct, and there are references in the user's manual that show how they can do that.
Thank you.
Mayor Giuliani, anything else with your witness here?
No, I think.
All right.
I think we've covered everything.
Thank you, Colonel. Do you have a, a next witness? I'm looking at the clock, and I know that we've got a time management issue with one of our witnesses.
Yes, I think we should call Anna Horst.
Okay.
Because she has an appointment, and we'll call her first.
Okay, and then after that, Senator Pat Colbeck, we need to make sure that we have the airport by 1:00. All right, thank you very much. Anna Horst?
Is Anna Horst here?
Anna Horst?
A R T H.
Anna Horst.
All right, we'll check on her. And let's go then to.
All right, Senator Pat Colbeck. Just so folks know that we've got folks in a separate room, just so that we can bring them out and have some kind of order here. Senator Colbeck. Thank you, sir. If you would, could you please introduce yourself?
Yes, my name's Michigan, former Michigan State Senator Patrick Colbeck. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you, Mr. Chair, and esteemed panel members. For eight years, I was sitting on the other side of this testimony. I was where you were sitting, and hopefully I'll be able to provide that kind of a unique perspective on what to look out for in this election. If you excuse me, I'm going to try to get my presentation up here and get that going. Picked it up.
Yeah, technology's great until you want to use it.
It's more difficult when you can't see. Nice job on the resolution of the screen here, by the way. Okay. And just for background purposes, as we're looking for it to recognize my USB slash drive. There we go. Much better. Et voila. Okay.
Well, we still don't have it on the screen yet. Ah, there we go.
All right.
And if you, if you would, please put it in play mode so we can see it. All right, please proceed.
All right, thank you very much. A perfect compliment, I think, to Colonel's testimony here, because. duties as poll challenger, as up training our next batch of poll challengers as to what they need to look out for and what we had been seeing. And coincidentally, by the way, that was when they were counting the military ballots, which just get to know, that's when they duplicate the ballots, because the military ballots come in in a format that's different from those that can be read by these tabulators. And if you don't have a Republican and a Democrat watching that, it's ripe for malfeasance, if you will, and that's exactly what happened. So along with that background, I'm actually a certified Microsoft Small Business Specialist. In addition to being that, I actually did Cable and Design International Space Station, so I, I have no problem working with technology, so it's kind of a unique background, and, and just so happened that I was right there on the Detroit AV Accounting Board on the night of the election. So I'm going to focus in on just, highlight three areas of the diagram that Colonel Waldron just showed you, because that's important for everybody to understand for people on the ground, these are the key pieces of technology. He talked about Imagecast Central, the equipment that I witnessed at the Detroit Accounting Board, it features a high-speed scanner and a workstation associated with it, these were networked in turn with adjudicator machines, which anything that was rejected by the high-speed scanner would go over to this adjudicator machine, that was part of the absentee ballot counting suite, if you will, for Dominion. In addition, they had something that was called a local data center, where all the election officials would work from a central computer workstation with a series of laptops, et cetera, that, that were connected to the rest of these computers, we'll get into that a little bit later here. But that Imagecast Central area is one of the key pieces of, or key systems, if you will, that are on the ground for the absentee ballots in particular. If you're at an in-person polling location, you'll have the Imagecast precinct set up, and that's on the right-hand side of this diagram. Up on the top is kind of the local data center and the, kind of the eye in the sky, the overarching look at what's going on with the election, and we'll get into that a little bit more detail later. And as you guys know, Dominion Voting Systems was used here in Arizona in Maricopa County, and they were using some of the same equipment that we were just talking about in regards to the Imagecast precinct, and also Imagecast Central, can't scan it there. So I, I said that I was in your position before, right? So if I were in your position, these are kind of some of the key questions I would be asking in regards to all that we're hearing about this testimony regarding this election. Number one, was the chain of custody for the election artifacts broken? And thank you very much, Senator Townsend, for bringing that up. That is a key term for everybody to understand, chain of custody, and we're going to go over a little diagram on specifically where some of my comments are going to focus in on in that chain of custody. All right, and the key is to hit the right arrow, all right? And was there evidence of election fraud? There can be fraud that happens that may not even violate statute, but you know that the intent is there to fraud the election, and they take advantage of loopholes that we have in the law. For example, in Detroit, we know that there is an ability for people to vote both at the polls and absentee, so some people's votes were more important than others. Was there evidence that election statutes were violated? Yeah. And Michigan? We have evidence to suggest that's exactly what happened. Was there evidence of foreign agents with the ability to manipulate the election data and third parties getting access to that data? We believe that, we've seen evidence of that as well. But the other thing need to ask is, well, all right, what are we going to do about it if we see all this happening? And what options do you have as legislators? All right, so let's go to this chain of custody, and I, I could go into a lot more detail on this chain of custody, and I'll, but I like to simplify it into just four key artifacts. Qualified voter file, i.e. who's registered to go off and vote in your state. Number two, poll book, that's a precinct-specific extract of the data from your qualified voter file. The ballot itself, pretty important artifact, right? But then, in the spirit of the old Stalin quote, it's not he who votes that counts, it's someone who counts the vote that counts, you got to look at the ballot tabulator and how the votes are tallied. And that was my focus when I went to the Detroit AV Accounting Board. I was one of those folks that was not specifically assigned to any particular counting station. I was looking at the big picture, and we'll go over what I found here in a sec. First of all, everybody hopefully has seen the idea that there's been a lot of voter anomalies, this is our first clue that something's happened. When you're on the ground, you can see all the things that are happening, you know, onesie-twosie style, you say, "Hey, wait a minute, that, that, that envelope was backdated," or you can see that they adjudicated something in favor of the Democrats or the Republican or something like that. That's easy to go off and see, but it's very difficult to see the big picture. That comes out afterwards with experts like Colonel Waldron. And in this case, we first started seeing issues when people were talking about Benford's Law being violated, that's actually used in criminal court cases to determine whether or not fraud existed. So that was the first indicator that some of the analyses we've seen flagged that. It's not proof, I mean, it's getting the, it's telling you that it's, you've got something off here that you got to investigate. Then we've seen linear regression analyses, that there's a lot of noise in, but it seemed to indicate a pattern of vote distribution that indicated some data manipulation. Then, most recently, we have actually seen folks who believe that they've identified specifically what the algorithm was, that was used to switch some of the data. So, some other things that were kind of odd, and you don't see while you're necessarily on the ground, but in retrospect, you'll be able to get access to it, this is actually documented as part of the affidavit that was submitted in a lawsuit that's put in Michigan by Sidney Powell and in other states. And you guys have voted quite a bit, you guys are, most of you have already served in office, right? Do you remember any of your votes being tabulated with a decimal point in the back of them? I, I don't remember any, my eight-year serving in the Michigan Senate, any, any times where I actually had a decimal point after a vote tally.
So that would suggest that a partial person was voting?
Well, sometimes, you know, there are people that tried to make you feel like a partial person when you serve, but no, that wasn't the case here. And so you guys have probably all heard about what I call the little switch, the Antrim County, we've heard testimony on that already today and some of the things that could possibly happen. Getting into the possible technical reasons for that is maybe you have an internal ballot barcode switch on it, where they have one barcode style or ballot style that's flagged, and then when they associate a specific scan of a vote, they flip it over to a different barcode style that may have the voters or the, the candidates flipped in it. Something else is something called the rank, ranked choice voting algorithm, that's one of the modules inside of the Dominion suite. And this is where you might see evidence of, this is the only place that I know of that at least I can start putting in fractions into your vote, because if you meet a certain vote threshold, it'll go off and switch that, it'll, it'll prioritize the votes for the second choice, if you will, and give them 10% of the first choice of whoever, of the, or 10% or whatever number you specify, it'll actually get into the point of allocating percentages of votes to one of the candidates. Another thing is data manipulation via remote access, and another thing to look at as you guys investigate what happened here or didn't happen inside Arizona, is take a look at your public accuracy tests. And there are people that, this is usually in Michigan at least, it's specified what the standards are for that by the Secretary of State. And if you don't run all the possible permutations of, of votes that might happen on a given ballot, you may leave gaps that can be exploited. And I would submit, we're going to show one of the examples of where we believe one of those gaps is that you could maybe flip a vote from a certain candidate to a write-in candidate, and preload this with write-in candidates, and we think we have evidence of that happening in Detroit. So if you want to go off and check into this, one of the things you're going to need to do, so, yep, is look into compact flashcards, event logs, and paper vote tallies. So these tabulator data cards, that's where the compact, that's where a lot of the election data we've been wanting to look at, it's going to be located, so please make sure you get your hands on that. Then we talk about the big switch, I'm not going to get any detail on this, suffice it to say, in Michigan, you know, our current vote deficit for President Trump is being projected as 154,188 votes, we got more than that that we can tie back to potential fraud. So in the state of Michigan, I know a lot of people have written us off in this context, but I tell you, Michigan's in play because of what the level of fraud we've seen. So here's what our Detroit AV Accounting Board looked like. And essentially, it was set up, so there's 503 precincts in the city of Detroit, they put in 134 of these Imagecast Central stations all the way around, that's where the poll books were located, and there are about two to five precincts per Imagecast Central unit, we had five poll workers per station. Overall, I would submit, there's probably less than 10 Republican workers at the whole night sitting at those, and by law, we're supposed to have a Republican and Democrat adjudicating ballots. Here's what, I said that I was looking at the big picture when I got in there, I was looking at the big picture. First question I asked was, one of these chief election officials, his name was Chris Thomas, I said, who I worked with when I was serving in the Senate, I said, "What, how are you going to protect the chain of custody around the tallies of the individual tabulators and, and your report outs to the county and all points beyond that?" So we talked, we talked about the idea of this getting reported out to New York Times, you can see it on CNN and all that kind of stuff, "Show me how that chain of custody is protected." And this election official, who was state elections director in Michigan for two decades, said, "I don't know." Now, this is kind of an important data point, don't you think? So, and I was badgering him the rest of the night, and I said, "You know what?" He finally acquiesced and said, "Tell you what, I'll, I'll let you know." And then finally, the last statement he had on it, because I was pretty persistent, was saying, "You know what, I'm not going to tell you till after tomorrow." And I go, "Well, you know, the primary duty of a poll challenger is to make sure that the election process are executed effectively, efficiently, and accurately in transparent manner." He did not allow that to be done. Now, I can see physical transfer of data, I can watch when somebody moves a flash drive from a tabulator to a central station, and I can go off and verify vote counts at that handoff. I can't get inside wires to go off and trace electrons through the Ethernet cables that I saw positioned, and that's the next point I want to highlight, and this is something important for you to understand here, is how these were connected. A lot of these election officials will say that they have firewalls in place, they have encryption in place, and I hope to demonstrate here that that doesn't mean a heck of a lot. And any hacker worth their salt knows that if one computer's connected to the Internet, they're all connected to the Internet, firewall or not. And so here's a diagram that I put together based on, and I, this is literally midnight the next night, before I forgot everything, I wanted to make sure I documented everything that was there. I went through and physically traced all the cables from all the tabulators and adjudicators to the local data center at the big, at the top. So it's that local data center that we have election officials that did confirm that that was connected to the Internet, but they said none of the tabulators or anything else were connected to the Internet. I can show physical connection between those tabulator, tabulator machines, the Ethernet cables, two routers, or managed switches, it's tough to tell from 12 feet away, but there's a router-type device connected to all the other devices on this network, and as Colonel Waldron pointed out, it's designed to work as a network. And so all these tabulators were connected to one another, all the adjudicators were connected to one another, the local data center that they acknowledged was connected to the Internet were connected to these tabulators and adjudicators. So, and so if that wasn't enough, we went around to all the different computers and observed in the bottom right-hand corner of all the computers, I can't do this because it defaults into a certain slide presentation mode, but if you have laptops that are window-enabled and you're connected to the Internet, you roll over that, and you got a Windows 10 device, roll your mouse cursor over in that bottom right-hand corner, and you'll see a LAN Internet connection icon, and you roll over, it's going to pop up and say, "Connected to the Internet." They wouldn't do that test for me to go off and demonstrate that, yeah. So, guys, it's serious stuff, and I also wanted to highlight, I took a snapshot of what the Wi-Fi connections were at that point in time, and one of them's called AV underscore connect, I wonder what that was connecting? Part of their spec that they have in the contract with the state of Michigan that is supposed to be connected to be Ethernet cables, and they even have cellular-based modems that they can plug into a lot of these items to transfer the data over the Internet. They've got a Dominion tech support manual that says, "Connected to the Ethernet." There's no denying that this was network-connected, and by the way, even if they say it wasn't connected to the Internet in the Detroit AV Accounting Board, I can trace a physical connection that says that the system that was used to tabulate 172,000-plus votes in the state of Michigan was all networked together. So even if it wasn't some guy sitting in an ice shanty in Antarctica connected to the Internet, that one guy in the city of Detroit that had access to all that information could modify the votes locally there. And so why does it matter? Well, we already talked about these man-in-the-middle attacks, we talked about, in the Sidney Powell lawsuit that's out there, there's additional exhibits that highlight that these passwords are available on the Internet, and when you have a man-in-the-middle attack, you think you're getting the right data, you think you're talking to the right person, but you ain't, you're talking to an in-between guy. We also got NIST that left a key under the mat, what do I mean by that? All the specs on what files to look for, what their file size is, everything else for the voting system is left up on the Internet for everybody to go off and see. I went there myself, I could download this file, took that extract from it, you can find out everything you need to go off and manipulate as a hacker. And we've got challenger observations on the ground that attest to each and every one of these, and I just want to highlight one of them, the poll worker observation, that we actually, he actually observed the fact that the printout of the tape said that there were write-in candidates on it, yet when you actually, he will attest in his affidavit that there were no write-in ballots submitted.
Senator Kolbeck, we're out of time.
Yep.
So thank you very much for your testimony. We also appreciate the slide deck that you presented, and if you are willing, would you please distribute that to the members of this panel, and I'm sure Mayor Giuliani would like to have it as well.
I will leave the copy for everybody.
Any questions for the gentleman there? Or would you like to move on to Anna Horst?
We can move on to Anna Horst.
All right. Thank you very much, Senator. Anna Horst, would you please come up to the witness stand?
I guess it's a table, not a stand, I was just corrected. The witness sit. Thank you for coming, Anna.
Thank you for having me.
Would you please give your name, and mayor, the floor is yours.
My name is Anna, and I'm a resident and registered voter in Pima County. I volunteered as a poll observer.
Can you get a little bit closer?
Sure, of course.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Anna, and I'm a resident and registered voter in Pima County. I volunteered as a poll observer on October 16th, and then I signed up to work as a poll worker on November 3rd in a neighboring precinct. Would you like me to just give you an overview?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, I wrote in because I was aware of some irregularities that happened while I was a poll observer, and some different activity that I just felt uncomfortable with on Election Day, so I'll go ahead and start with what happened on the day that I was an observer. I was certified prior to that to be able to watch the two people that would be correcting the problematic ballots, which I guess are called, they were duplicates. When I walked into the room, they said, "I'm sorry, you're not, you can't be in here, you're going to go into the, another room." So I had to walk back to the front desk, I was escorted from, from that area back to this, to the one area where the ballots were being separated from their envelope. And I, I was, there were 30 to 32 people doing this, and there were probably 14 to 17 tables that were there sat two people, and it was supposed to be a Democrat and a Republican. But not every table had a Democrat, but not every table had a Republican. So many of those tables had either a Libertarian or someone, there was one table with someone from the Green Party, and then there were three or four tables that had a Pima County worker at the, at each of those tables. And they worked there at the elections office because when people... I was certified prior to that to be able to watch the two people that would be correcting the problematic ballots, which I guess are called, they were duplicates. When I walked into the room, they said, I'm sorry, you're not, you can't be in here, you're going to go into the, another room. So I had to walk back to the front desk. I was escorted from, from that area back to the, to the one area where the ballots were being separated from their envelope. And I, I was, there were 30 to 32 people doing this, and there were probably 14 to 17 tables that were there sat two people. And it was supposed to be a Democrat and a Republican. But not every table had a Democrat, but not every table had a Republican. So many of those tables had either a Libertarian or someone, there was one table with someone from the Green Party. And then there were three or four tables that had a Pima County worker at the, at each of those tables. And they worked there at the elections office because when people came in from the building, they talked to them and their conversations led, led me to believe things like, oh, did you leave your lunch? Did you bring lunch? And they said, no, it's over in my office, I'm going to go get it later. And she was back in five minutes. So similar situation conversations that went on with people who came in with those, with those workers. I found it difficult for me to be able to oversee 32 people and what they were doing. I was able to catch a few of the things that were mistakes or where ballots were just, they were taking them out of the envelopes and putting them on, in a pile. And their job in this particular bill, room was to watch, to make sure that the ballots were in one direction. And then they would double check the count of the ballot to the envelope, to, to, I imagine, to check it against the envelopes that came in. Each table was given a bin to put these in. And these bins would then go to another area where they were being stacked up to be tabulated starting on October 22nd. Many of these had mistakes or they were written in pencil. And the workers, as I went around, had questions on, you know, is this a good ballot, is this not? I was told by the gentleman that ushered me out of the place where I was supposed to be and said, you aren't, talk to anyone, you do not communicate with them. If you have an issue or you see an issue, you need to go to the supervisor, which is at the front of the table, at the front of the room. So as I saw things, as I went around to each table, I would go to the supervisor and I let her know, you know, they don't know what to do with this, this ballot, it's a pencil or blah, blah, blah. And she'd say, no, it's fine, it's fine. So as I went back to the tables where I saw these issues, under my breath, I said, you need to go tell her, you need to go talk to them about this. And so many of them said, what do I do with this ballot? It's in pencil. Oh, it's fine, it'll go through. Or it was, some people wrote over their ballot, over the little oval circle where they were supposed to mark. And those were put into a pile, a separate pile that would be called duplicates. Those duplicates then went to another table and were then taken to the room where I had been ushered out of. And there was one person, there was supposed to be a second person. And I said, is there a Republican at that table? Because I said, is there a Democrat and a Republican? And he said, well, we hope so, they have to, if they get here, but it'll just be, you know, just be me and hopefully a second person. So as I saw these ballots along this area that was, that they marked as dupe, which I understood to stand for duplicates that were going to be fixed. They would then be taken to the table, to the room where I could see a glass, it was a glass wall between us. And they were taken around to the other side to be dealt with. I didn't get to see that at that point. So when I left and the other person took over for me at 1 o'clock, I was there for five hours. I shared with her, I said, there's a lot of mistakes that are happening. They're just, they're not putting them in, in the order that they need to be in. So when they get folded, they become a duplicate because they can't be counted. The machine wasn't going to accept them. So it had to be then taken out of the pile and put in to a duplicate. So when I left, the man who had ushered me out of the room, the first room, came to get me at 1 o'clock and walked me straight over to the front desk. And he said, I hope everything went well. And I said, well, my concern is not necessarily where I was, it was hard for me to watch 32 people by myself. But more concerning is when these ballots were opened in the other room. And so to give you kind of a sense of how it worked is, the ballots, however they were collected, were brought into an initial area of the office of the elections in Pima County. And that room, they were then, the envelopes were then opened up and the signatures were checked. Then they would go through a double door where they were then sent to the room that I was in, where there were, as many people as I explained before, trying to put them in an order, not necessarily of where they were from, but how they came in. So just, let's just say there were maybe 200, 250 per box, I'm not sure, but they, they came from different zip codes, different areas. It was whatever was mailed in. And then those were then put aside to be counted after the 22nd. It was, my concern was the amount of ballots that were considered to be problematic, that were then leaving the area that I was in, going to a room where there were only supposed to be two people, and yet not even sure there was two people. So that was my experience as an, as an observer that I shared, I thought that was concerning. The other thing is when I came back to drop off my ballot, I had to drop it off outside. And there was no longer a police officer. We found out that it was because our mayor, or not my, I live in Oro Valley, but the Tucson mayor had asked, had, wasn't allowing a police officer in front of the office anymore because it was upsetting to people to come and vote. And so I asked the man, so my, I have to put my ballot out here. And he said, yes. So I said, how can I be sure someone isn't going to come and take this big box? And he said, no, we're, you know, we're watching it. And I said, who's you? And it was him and an elderly woman who was about 85. I, I, I don't know, and I'm sorry. Meaning that she was, she looked fragile. And I don't know how that could be protected, but I was a little concerned about that. It did make it in because when I checked my ballot, it was counted. But another question is, how, how do we know who we voted for? That's a separate issue, but my point is, is that I don't know if my ballot actually has the, the people that I voted for. And, you know, as I said, that's something separate from what I experienced there as an observer. As a poll worker, I was assigned to be a provisional ballot clerk. And that was on election day. And on that day, I had worked the primary in August. So I had an idea of who would come by, what the issues were. But this time, we had so many more people who needed a provisional ballot than we had been allotted to have in this one precinct. So that was concerning. But the people that came to me were, I had so many people who said, I didn't ask for a mail-in ballot. My wife isn't listed as a, as an early ballot person, but I am. And that, those are the kind of people that we had a lot of. But secondly, I had people who had just moved here from other states. And most of them were from two apartment complexes. It was, it was concerning because as we counted them, we probably had over 40 people who were in one apartment complex with one address, who had moved here from other states, that I began to turn away. A little, I'd say, I don't know, within the hour, we were so busy that I, I took a break and went outside. And a gentleman with a yellow shirt said, hi, I'm with, I'm with the Democratic Party. I'm here from California, and I'm here at this precinct specifically. I came from a Phoenix, in Maricopa County, a precinct there. And we're here to help turn Arizona blue. And I don't know if, just looking at me, he decided that he felt safe saying that to me? Maybe he assumed that I would be okay with that. I was shocked. And he, and I said, oh, so what, he said, oh, I said, so what is, what is your plan? What are you doing? And he said, well, I have lawyers on call to contact immediately if you, if they don't allow them to vote, people to vote. And I said, well, there was a cutoff date. And he said, nope, every count, every vote should count. So that made me nervous, of course, because I didn't know the law specifically, and I didn't want to do something that would cause a problem. So I thought, and he said, oh, well, I've only had to turn away, just a couple people were turned away, and I was able to help one person go back in. Well, that, that was probably sent to me because I was the provisional ballot clerk. So of course, that was somebody that I had to take care of. So I went back in and thought, well, this is unusual. I, I'm concerned that somebody outside is going to be calling an attorney on something that I did. Because I said, no, I sent somebody away and said, I'm sorry. I mean, if you don't have any proof that you've lived here, or proof of having registered, I, I can't, I can't give you a ballot. So I called the recorder's office and explained this. And she said, well, you have to let them, all votes will count, but it's on a case-by-case basis. So at that point then, I had to call in to the recorder's office every, at every single ballot. And you have to understand, we ran out of spaces. So, I mean, I'm, we were at like 200, I'm sure you can check on this to be sure, but we were over the amount of ballots we had. But every time I called the recorder's office, they would ask me for their name and their, their birth, date of birth. And when they would look that up, she, the person on the phone would say, okay, well, you can go ahead and let them vote. And so I was trying to find a constant that I could go by so that we could speed up the process. I mean, is it, is it if they've moved here and they have this, and if they've moved here at a certain date, what is it? And they would not give me any constant, they just said, you just have to call for, every case is different. So my concern and why I wrote in was that I had two people, right after having a slew of people who came in from other states wanting to vote without having been registered and allowed to vote per the recorder's office, I then had someone come in from Maricopa County and one from Pinal County. It just happened right after. And each of them, when I called in, they said, nope, you're going to have to have them go back to Maricopa County. And the other one will have to go back to Pinal. And I said, well, how is that, that this person from Wisconsin, and this person from Michigan, and this person from Kentucky was able to do that? And she put me on hold for a second and then came back and said, well, it's just that we have their records more accurately than we have for Maricopa. We just can't, we don't have, we're not able to process a Maricopa County ballot. So I had to send them away. But then as they, other people were coming through, it made me question why that was happening. So I, I asked them, do you have information that will prove that you are a resident, that I can, I can verify that you are registered to vote here? And they would pull out their card and it very clearly said that they were Republican. They had a voter card. So to, to test this theory out, I called the recorder's office and asked them. And they were denied. I had to deny them. And so I was in a frenzy trying to take care of all of these people. But I found that the discrepancy between every vote counts and only those that the recorder's office would allow was indicative of how they chose who they wanted to allow to vote. And there was a consistency in the voter preference that they chose. And that concerned me because by the end of the night, which was at 8:15, after we counted all of the votes, they got put in the box, and we were waiting for someone to come get them, I'm in the car and the, the election was, was already counted for Arizona, which I found appalling, first of all, after working 15 and a half hours taking in votes. But the experience really led me to believe that it was not, there should have been a, a system that we could have followed. Because I understood that registered voters ended on a certain date and you couldn't come in and vote. But I was having to allow people to vote that literally had just moved here within two weeks, three weeks. And they were all from two different, not all of them, I take that back, there was a large majority, a large percentage of people who were, had addresses from two apartment complexes. And the last thing is that I had a homeless man who came in with a, with a registration. And the reason I know he's homeless is because I said, where do you live? And he said, he didn't speak English, and he said, I don't have a home, but when I was at a, at a shelter, they registered me at the recorder's office. So when I called about it and they said, well, he was probably registered to be in this precinct. I said, but he doesn't live here. And they go, well, it's, anybody who was registered downtown can vote. And so I found that to be odd. And last week, for work, I was on the other side of town, and I saw this gentleman on the south side of Tucson with his shopping cart. And I, I swung into the parking space and called him and just said, hi, can I talk to you? And when he saw me, he ran out, you know, for, who knows why. But my, my point is, is these are the kind of people that, that had apparently permission to vote in a precinct that was literally 25 miles away because they had a voting card that was given to them from downtown, that it was a downtown precinct that allowed him to vote here. So my, my point is, is that if somebody from Pinal County and Maricopa County can't vote, how is it that, in my, in this precinct, how is it that a homeless man from another area of the town and also people from other states were able to get permission to vote? And that was concerning to me, and that's why I'm here.
Senator, thank you very much. Mr. Giuliani, do you have any questions specific to this witness?
Sure.
Please proceed.
Couple up, try to.
Just, just to give you a marker on time, it's 12:02.
So you were there for 16 and a half hours, Ms. Orth?
On election day?
Yeah.
Yes.
Wow. And you were supposed to work with the ballots that were being, that were being examined?
I was working with the voters, the ballots of voters who were not able to walk into the precinct to vote normally on a ballot. So some of them came to me saying, it says that I got an early ballot and I never got it. Others said, it says, it doesn't even say that I'm on there. It says that I've already voted, or I'm, I'm not allowed to vote here. Those are the kind of.
So these were ballots that had difficulties?
Yes.
And there were 28 or 30, 35 people that were looking at those ballots that you had to observe?
No, that was, okay, on, on, I just described to you my experience as a poll worker on election day. Those 30 people that we, I mentioned earlier were, were, when I was a poll observer on the 16th of October at the elections office in Pima County.
And you were unable to see what they were doing?
I, it was a room as big as almost maybe half the size of this banquet room. And I was an observer watching 30.
As far away as we are?
I could walk behind them. I could walk behind them, but I couldn't walk behind 35 people at the same time.
And what were they doing?
They were taking them out of the envelope. They had already been, they had been brought in from the recorder's office where that, where the, the ballot had been opened, the envelope had been opened. And according to what I was told, the signature had already been checked in another room.
But you didn't see this thing that you checked?
No, I didn't get to see that. They would take these out and they would take.
Did you ask to see it?
Yes, and I was not allowed.
And were you refused?
Yes. So they said, and I wasn't allowed to talk to anybody, but I, as I said before, I could talk to the supervisor. These people who sat at each of these tables, who were representative of mostly one party with Democrat Party. And they would take them out of the envelope and then put them in a pile and then separate the, the inside envelope. In Arizona, we have an outside envelope, then the inside envelope, and then the ballot, right? So the ballot was then collected from the bin. So the ballot was then collected from the bin. So each table would get a bin and they would, uh, separate them, put the ballots in a, in a pile, put the envelopes in a, in a rubber band, put them to the side and then mark that they had such and such amount of, of regular ballots and such and such amount of duplicates, problematic ballots that then had to be taken to a table. Uh, and they would separate those, take the duplicates, mark them, put them at a table, which, which were then taken to the original room where I had been ushered out of, not, that I was not to help them.
In a, a room that you were excluded from, they examined the signatures?
Yes. No, they started examining the signatures, then removed to this room. And then from this room, they were then piled to then be tabulated later.
Further examination of the signatures?
No, not in this room. The only room that was done in this.
You observed no examination of signatures and they refused to let you do that?
Right, I was only allowed to watch these people put these in piles. So when I was ushered back.
So how many, how many ballots do you think, just a rough estimate? How many ballots, a thousand, a hundred, 2,000?
I would say each box had between 200 and 250 ballots. And I was there for five hours. And during that time that I was there, each table went through six to seven to eight, depending on how fast they were and how many mistakes they made. Because many times the, the ballots weren't click, weren't straight and they had to recount them or I would hear them say.
So how do we, how do we do that arithmetic?
All right, well, let's see, 250 times eight, somebody who's not nervous maybe can say.
2,000.
That's per table. And there were about 16 to 17 tables of two people doing this at the same time.
So, so the, as I best understand this, there were 2,000 ballots times 17 tables?
Yes.
That you or anyone else did, who have got to, got a chance, no Republican got a chance to observe that as far as you know?
Well, I was the only observer allowed in at one time. So a, a gal took over for me at one o'clock when I left. And I told her, I, I'm exhausted. I don't know how you can watch all 17, but stand behind one of the tables and, and you'll see that this particular table keeps folding them and tearing them. And once that happens, it has to become a duplicate. And when this becomes a duplicate, it goes to that table and it goes to the room. We don't get to see what happens to that. So you can't talk to them, but you can do this and tell them, look, that's, that's, that's folded or that's crooked or, um, and I said, if you see one again that has a pencil on it, the supervisor is saying that yes, it, she told me specifically that it could go through. I mean, told me that it, it couldn't, but told them that it could. So I said, there's some discrepancy in what she's telling me and what she's telling them. So, uh, you know, just do your best to try to, to keep an eye on this particular table is doing this. That particular table, when I walked by, is doing that. That one over there has a Pima County worker on it and she works here with them. And there's no Republican at that table, so it's, it's, it's very concerning. And so that was the, so when I was ushered out, they came specifically twice to me and said, uh, please don't talk to anybody and you cannot leave on your own. Make sure that when it's time, what time do you have to leave so we can walk you out? When they walked me out, the gentleman said, uh, I hope everything went well. And I said, well, I'm concerned because here they would, you know, that my only concern is the handling of the ballots, which makes them ineligible to go through the machine correctly. But it's the room before me and the room after me that's, it's a concern. I, I don't get to see.
Let me just, let me ask you about that. So a certain number of ballots were now put aside as duplicates.
Yes.
Duplicates means that they had a problem.
Yes, that they have to be duplicated.
Right, it didn't mean there were two ballots.
Right, that's what they call them.
Duplicates can sound like two ballots. What it meant was there's something wrong with it and therefore we may have to duplicate it.
Yes, and that's the room that I was originally.
And they were put aside.
Put aside, taken out.
They were brought into another room and you were not allowed to go in there.
No, I was not allowed to go back there.
So you were, you were cut off from that also?
Yes, I was specifically taken out.
You were cut off from observing the problem ballots?
Yes, I was specifically taken out of that room, ushered out and brought into this room, which really was just the room as I explained.
And how many, how, how many could you estimate that is?
Um, each table would have an average of, that seems, I would say maybe 1/16 of the pile. So, you know, let's say an average of maybe 10 to 20 ballots. But by the time I left, there were, these bins were filled. They would fill them, they would go correct them or whatever it is that they did and brought them back.
Best estimate?
Um, I would say, my guess would be close to, uh, in the time, the day that I was there, just in five hours, maybe, uh, 2,000 ballots.
Okay. And you had a sense that when there was problems with ballots or whether someone should vote or not, the choices that were being made would allow people that appeared to be voting for Biden and the Democrats to vote and declining those who appeared to be people who might be voting for Trump or the Republicans?
Well, yes, I began to get that sense after I saw that people from other states who weren't even registered in the state of Arizona were being allowed to, to vote. I was given direction that I had to give them a provisional ballot. Because as they walked out, there was a gentleman out there who told me, he was specifically there to make sure that every vote, voter who wanted to vote could vote. And so that was on election day though, Mr. Giuliani, that's not on the observant, the day.
Right, I got it, I got it.
And on that day, that's, that was happening. And then when I would get a voter who was from another county and had some indication, sometimes they had a shirt that either said Trump on it or they, they showed me their voter card and, and said, I, you know, and they gave me some indication that they, uh, were a Trump voter. And I had to call on them, like I did for every single person that came in to the recorder's office. And I was told to send them away. And so it was at that point that I started to see that there, this isn't, this isn't, this can't be right, this can't be right. So I tested this and, and asked her. And then especially as I said.
Glad you recognized that.
Yeah, and so when I said, they all, you all live at this apartment complex and you all live at this other one? And, and they said, well, yeah, we have to, we, you know, we're all coming in to vote. And so I, I said, well, are you a, how long have you lived here? Are this your other precinct here? Well, I've lived here, I've lived there. And they still were allowed to vote. Uh, many of them were not residents for more than a month. Other people said they were registered in another state, but that they were here. And, and then as I said, I think the, the nail in the coffin for me was when this poor little, old homeless man, and I speak Spanish, so I spoke to him and said, you know, how are you here? How, and he said, I was told to come vote, I want to vote. And I said, okay, well, you know, do, where do you live? And he goes, well, I lived in a, um, shelter downtown. Well, downtown is 15 miles from where I live. So there, I'm sure that's not his precinct, he should be voting there.
So you thought there were about 2,000 like this, roughly?
I would say easily, just in the five hours that I was there, on one specific day, and that was on a Friday, they were going to be counted, they were being collected to be tabulated.
One last question. The gentleman who said he was there to turn Arizona blue?
Yes, that was.
What was he, what was his official position?
He had, he had a sign.
Is he an inspector or something?
No, he was an observer, a poll observer that was from California, was from LA. And in, and on a break, I walked out there and, and I, I said hello and just walking. And he said, hi. And I said, what are you doing? And he said, well, I'm a poll observer for the Democratic Party and I'm here. I said, oh, and he, and he goes, the weather is hot here, it's not this hot as it is at home. And I said, well, where are you from? And he said, I'm from California. And I said, what are you doing here? And he said, well, I'm here specifically to help turn this precinct blue, but this is one of our problem ones. And I said, oh, uh, and as I said to the panel over here, I don't know why he felt comfortable telling me that, but he said, I, and I said, you came all the way from LA? He goes, no, actually I came from another precinct in Maricopa where it was another one that we were, were focusing on and now I'm here.
What, what was he doing? Was he campaigning? Was he encouraging people to vote for, for Biden? What, how was, what activities did he take part in to turn Arizona blue?
Well, as I understood, because I was inside working, his job was to make sure that anybody who was turned away to vote, that he would have people he could call, attorneys in, in his words. Because I, I have a, a couple of attorneys that I'm connected to right now that if anybody's not allowed to vote, I can, um, make sure that they're represented. And so anybody who was not allowed to vote in that polling place, I was the one that they would be talking to. So of course, that was, that was somewhat directed at me. Since I'm the one who would say, no, you can't vote. So I don't know what else he was doing, but he said there was a group of them that were coming in.
They sent him there sometime after you began doing that?
He was there, well, we started at five o'clock in the morning, just getting ready. So when I went out for my, for a break, I was maybe around 10 o'clock and he had been there. Um, and they were, they, I, I'm sorry, I don't remember what he had on his shirt, but they were, they were very clear that they were, um, they had T-shirts, they said, that they matched. Another person came in to take over for him and it was a yellow shirt with something written on the front. I.
Well, thank you very much for your service and for your courage and testify. And just make one point, Mr. Chairman. Uh, her testimony alone, and I see no reason why she isn't telling the truth. By the way, she is under oath in the sense that she submitted an affidavit under penalties of perjury to what she just testified to.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, 34,000 votes unobserved would change the nature of this, uh, election. Just our testimony.
I need it, go ahead.
One witness.
Ms. Sir, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Members, the, I, I know, I know everybody wants to ask a question. We need to, well, everybody has one. Um, it is now 12:15. I expect this hearing, uh, at the rate that we're going, we will be here until late into the night. Um, please be brief with your question and I would appreciate it if there's no follow-ups, just so that we can have a lunch break, uh, and kind of set the expectation for the folks who are here and get back at it.
And we'll, we'll try to make the witnesses focus a little bit more.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, Leo Biussucci, I'm sorry, Representative Biussucci, you're first and then Mr. Burley.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you, Anna, for, for being here. Just a quick question about the, the voters that you said were coming in that were from out of town or they just moved there, whatever their reasoning was. Did they have an Arizona ID with an address or anything to show you? Were they on the voter rolls or these?
They were not on the voter rolls. They had out of state driver's licenses, but had a, uh, either an electric bill or not, or some kind of a bill that they showed me on their phone, showed me that they lived in this particular precinct. With that, I would call the, the recorder's office.
And you would verify through them that they were indeed legal to vote?
Right, and so then when I'd say, well, when did you move here? Well, I moved here on such and such a date. But you had to have registered, I think in Arizona by the 15th. And then it was extended to the 22nd or the 23rd. So it was, it was just questionable that they were still allowed to vote. But I had a longtime voter who wasn't allowed to vote from another precinct. And yet someone could vote from another state.
Thank you.
Senator Burley?
Yes, sir, thank you, ma'am. When the votes that needed to be duplicated, the, the ones that needed to be corrected, when they went to the end of the room, did you notice anybody in there that was actually overseeing that correction, a Republican or a Democrat?
No, as I mentioned before, that's the first room I went into. And he explained to me that he, this is the room where that would happen, but that, um, I was not allowed to be in there.
When you were in there before they sent you somewhere else? Did you see a Republican and a Democrat?
No, he was alone, he was, no, it was just one person.
You know how he was registered? You know if he's a registered Republican or Democrat?
I, I don't know, but I have an idea, but that wouldn't be.
Bottom line is.
We appreciate, no speculation, thank you very much.
It's a violation of the law anyway, because you're supposed to have both.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, um, members, one question and then we're gonna break for lunch. Uh, Representative Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and I just have a really quick question. Um, we had our county recorder in Maricopa County instruct voters to cross out mistakes on their ballots, uh, for the November, November election. And we later had a judge say, no, that was likely breaking the law, you can't do that. Um, we've also heard from adjudicators saying that they had seen a full Republican ballot, um, all the way down, but that President Trump's name was crossed out and, um, the other candidate was circled in. Is it possible, in your opinion, in that other room that you weren't allowed to be in when there wasn't a second person watching the adjudication? Uh, were there pins allowed? Were there, were they, would someone be able to cross out one candidate and vote for someone else?
Well, again, I wasn't in there to be able to say this accurately, but there's only, you know, can make an assumption, if, if a room requires two people and an observer, that a person by themselves, it's possible, of course, it's possible that that's what happened. But those are the kind of ballots that I'd see, that, because I was able to see them as they came through in this room, there was a, they were either all for, um, GOP or all for the Democratic Party. But one of the president, um, little oval had been marked off, or not marked, crossed, which makes it a, a problematic ballot. So that would have to go into the other room that you're asking me about. And again, I wasn't in there to be able to speak accurately about what this person could or could have done or didn't do. Uh, and that to me was the problem in this whole issue. I, I, I'm useless to be able to watch people just putting them in order. I, we should have had an observer watching, um, these current ballots.
All right, Ms. Sir, thank you very much for your testimony. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, um, here's how we're gonna manage the lunch break. As you leave, please wait a minute before you walk out the door or you won't get back in. As you're walking out the door, you'll be given an armband. And in order to come back in, you'll have to show that armband. Um, we are going to break, it's, uh, now 12:22. We will be back here at one o'clock. It's gonna be a short break, thank you.
All right, Leah.
Hey, well, I mean.
The earlier guys.
Yeah.
Gave some eye opening.
They did.
Sure. 1.9 million. Crack me, is that what he said? He said 1.9 million votes, their signatures weren't checked?
Right, yeah. Yep.
That's, that, you, that, that's not, that's not legal, that, that's not.
He also said, right, and he also said Dominion was con, uh, was communicating by internet with, um, other countries, I guess with, uh, the other software. So that's a little bit scary. And then he also said that DEFCON manipulated its system in two minutes back in 2009, that scuttle system that they were talking about. Um, Texas said no to the Dominion system because of all its irregularities. So that's concerning. Like I said, and I'll say it again, if Trump can get this to the Supreme Court, he wins.
This right here, I don't know about anything else. Okay, I don't know about anything else. This one right here, 1.9 million? That has to go to the Supreme Court.
I agree.
That has to go to the Supreme Court. And, um, and if there's one thing, and I know everybody out, um, not everybody, a, a lot of people out there like, yeah, all this needs to go to the Supreme Court. So we understand what the emotion to that is. But it's almost like they, they're trying to tell Trump's lawyers what they need to do.
Yeah.
You can't walk into a room and Trump is down 20,000 votes and say, okay, well, we found 11 and there, and there's massive fraud.
Right.
You, I mean, now, now, if he's down 20,000, you find 23,000? Oh, they, they, oh no, oh. You had to find enough to overturn or to challenge. You just can't walk in there with a little drip, drip.
Right.
Uh, you know, look, we found 7, 8,000 and we know there's gotta be more. You don't know that.
Right.
You don't know that. And that, I, but in, in the case in Arizona, that's 1.9 million. That flips that state immediately.
It does, and there's something shady going on in Pennsylvania. I, I, obviously that's gonna probably get to the Supreme Court. I, I, obviously that's going to probably go to the Supreme Court and it's probably going to be in Trump's favor. I don't know. Like I said, I feel like if anything goes to the Supreme Court, it's probably going to be a Trump win at that point. But you know, I've always heard, if you dig deep enough, you're going to find something. I've always heard that. So they're just, they're just going to keep digging until they get-
And they're talking about Michigan. They're talking about Michigan. He said, there's some stuff going on in Michigan. And I know everybody's enclose the book on it, but no.
And, and you know, there's a lot of, uh, check marks on Twitter saying, oh my gosh, they just confirmed Arizona, they just verified Arizona while there's a, a hearing going on in Arizona. Honestly, verification doesn't mean anything. That can be turned over real quick. That's just more smoke and mirrors to me. So, but you know what? Today is Cyber Monday. Did you know that?
Cyber Monday, baby.
Cyber Monday. So, um, while you're taking your lunch break here, you can actually go to mypillow.com. They're now an official sponsor of the show. Go to mypillow.com and it's actually buy one, get one free, which I was shocked that they did that for us. But it is, so you can buy one of their pillows, their mattress topper, their six-piece towel set or, uh, their Giza sheets, which are absolutely amazing. Um, and buy one, get one free so you can keep one and then you can give it as a gift this year. All you got to do is use that promo code Wayne. And funny story for you, pretty much everybody in my household right now has COVID. Every single one of them but me, because I have the antibodies. But anyways, uh, my husband said to me, can you put on those Giza sheets? I'm really sore. My bones are aching because we have on different sheets right now because I was watching, washing the Giza. And I was like, oh my gosh, I'm trying to take care of three sick people and you're demanding Giza sheets? He was like, but they're so cool and stuff. I was like, fine. So, you know, get the Giza sheets.
I got the mattress topper before Thanksgiving.
I'm telling you.
I want to cry right now. I do. I want to cry.
Good, wow.
I literally, um, I think Brian got it first and Brian was like, yeah, hey, it's just like hotel. Yeah, okay, whatever. Yes, it is. It is. It is just like you are like, because basically what they have, they have, um, a one inch and a three inch. They may, they may even have too much, but it's a mattress topper. You put it on top of the mattress, you, you, um, seal it to your mattress and then, and then you put the Giza sheets on there. That's what I did.
Yeah.
I swear.
And then you get the pillow and it feels just like you're in a five-star hotel.
Yeah, exactly. It does. It does. I'm not playing. I mean, I, I would not get on here and say that if it didn't happen. I even, I even was talking to, um, um, Brian and Leah about it while I was laying on it. And Leah was like, you sound so relaxed. I was like-
Yeah, you really did.
I'm like-
I mean, your voice was just so relaxed.
This is, this is cool, man.
I want to know if anybody has their dog bed because my, I have to get a new dog bed. And I just found out that MyPillow has a dog bed. So I'm very excited about getting one of those.
But, um, we will be, uh, you know, we'll be giving away some more prizes later on in the week, you know? Uh, my birthday's coming up, so you know, we're-
It is.
Going to see what we can do for that too. But yeah, um, I, I don't know. We might be on a little bit later. We might not. But, uh, you know, we have some things that we need to take care of. But we just want to let you know, uh, MyPillow is our official sponsor of The Wayne DePree Show. And Mr. Lindell, we're going to have him on sooner or later, but we want to have him on to tell us his story, Mr. Lindell. But, um, again, you can go to that link right there, mypillow.com/radiospecials. You get two-for-one stuff, y'all. And there's a sixty-day guarantee. What's thirty? Now it's sixty. Sixty-day guarantee. If you don't, I mean, if something you write, you can send it back. They can fix it. They can fix it.
They got a warranty and everything. That's how much they stand by their products. Customer service outstanding. I, I'll tell you, I, even if I like something, I won't buy it if their customer service is bad. Love their customer service there.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Um, with that said, uh, yep, Biden is toast. Again, uh, buy one, get one free Christmas special. That's the phone number. Promo code Wayne. Uh, and if you need anything else from us, let us know.
So do you think Biden's going to borrow Hillary Clinton's air cast for his broken ankle?
You know, you know what Kamala said when she heard about it?
What?
Damn. You were supposed to put all that stricken on in there, not, not, oh man, oh man. He's still alive?
What's next for him? A black eye?
No, no.
That'll be next, a black and blue eye.
His arm, his arm is next. It's the leg and then arm.
Somebody was like, why'd they give him a cat scan of his head if he broke his ankle? Well, we probably found his head. They want to see if he was bleeding.
Yeah, yeah.
Ah, tell you.
All right, um, we, we had so much to talk about on the show today, so we'll move it to tomorrow.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, we thought that it would, it'd be really important for y'all to, uh, to check that out. Uh, the, the thing happening in Arizona. So with that said, before we go, uh, all of our Patreon members, uh, thank you, thank you for, uh, being a member. And if you want to become a member, if you want to help us take care of the show, if you want to help us, um, continue to do this, go to patreon.com/wdshow. Monthly contribution, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, forty, no.
Forty, forty-five, fifty.
Fifty, fifty-five, sixty. Okay, um, basically what it is, is, and I know Christmas, Christmas is in a few weeks. So basically you give twenty dollars now. And after you get twenty dollars, then you just shift it down to five dollars until after the Christmas holiday.
There you go.
You know, um, and that's one thing the Patreon will let you do. It will allow you to shift your contribution on a monthly basis based on your budget. But, uh, your contributions help us continue to do what we're doing on a regular basis. We don't have to do a GoFundMe. We don't have to do, we don't have to get on here and beg and beg and beg and stuff like that. That's one thing that we won't do. We're not, we ain't begging nobody for nothing, or at least-
That's right. And if you're wondering what, what Patreon goes for, it also goes for our app, which is free to you across that money, but we actually, uh, give this to you for free. All you have to do is go to your store and download The Wayne DePree Show. It's actually Wayne DePree Podcast is what you type in. You'll see it there. It pops up. You download in just a few quick seconds and then you can actually watch us live. You'll be able to chat with us when we do call-ins. And I have a feeling that we're going to be doing probably Talk Tuesday or Thursday this week. So you'll be able to call in, send us messages, even check your weather. I know I'm getting snow tonight, so I'll be checking my weather on the way-
Yeah, we got a tornado.
Yeah, yep. And you can also set an alarm. It's really cool. So you definitely got to download and check it out. You can read articles and everything. So that's what Patreon's going for.
That's right. So with that said, ladies and gentlemen, we are out of here. God bless. Make sure you share the show and make sure that you subscribe, whether you're on, um, YouTube. I saw all the beautiful people. Don't forget to hit the like button and, and hit the notification button. Yeah. Periscope, thank you so much. Subscribe, uh, RT, thank you for, um, thank you for what you do for us, uh, for my Facebook family. Thank you. They're still suppressing me. They're still suppressing me, but we're still moving on. God bless.